This is the one-minute warning. We'll get started in just about a minute.
Okay, I think we'll go ahead and get started. I'll call to order the regular town council meeting of December 1st, 2020. We'll have the roll call. Nope, wait, sorry. We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember September 1st.
Wonderful.
Ready? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. And I think we have President Ron Derrick from the Santan State who's on line to offer the invocation. President Derrick?
Are we live?
Yes, sir.
We can hear you.
Our Heavenly Father, we are very grateful to be able to come together tonight to have this meeting and to discuss the pertinent matters that are before us. We're so grateful for the changes of the seasons, this beautiful time of year, for the thoughts of Thee and my beloved Son that are pervading our thoughts during this time. Father, we are so grateful for the many people who are serving each other during this time of pandemic. We do pray for those who have been affected in a negative way by the current circumstances. We ask Thy blessings upon our first responders, those who are on the front lines, also upon those who may have lost loved ones. We pray for Thy comfort to be upon them. Heavenly Father, we are grateful to live at this time. We pray that we might do some good while we're here. We ask Thy special blessing upon our town council tonight as they deliberate, as they meet together. We ask Thy blessing upon all those who will be presenting, that Thy Spirit might prevail among us. We're grateful to see many peacemakers among us. We ask Thy blessings upon us, that we might be able to bring about a condition of peace through our individual actions, that it might make a collective difference in this world. Please remember our local government, our national governments. Please bless our leaders. We pray that Thy Spirit might guide and direct us in all that we do. And we offer this prayer with a deep sense of gratitude to Thee, Father, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, President Derrick. Go to the roll call now.
Mayor Scott Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski?
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks?
Present.
Councilmember Scott September?
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke?
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yenthus?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We'll go on to presentations. If Angie, if you'd join me down near the podium, I'll meet you down there.
This is Angie Darnell, who is a 26-year, is it? That's one more year than what I served. I know a little bit about working for the town of Gilbert over a period of time and what a pleasure and a privilege it is to serve the people of Gilbert. Angie's been doing that for 26 years and is now retiring, and we want to recognize her. And I want to read a couple of things from her recognition that tells you the kind of person that Angie is and how much we're going to miss her and really appreciate what she's done. Let me just start off saying, "As the mayor of Town of Gilbert, it is my distinct pleasure to express our heartfelt congratulations to water metering supervisor Angie Darnell upon her retirement from the Town of Gilbert. For over 26 years, Angie has dedicated her career to serving the Town of Gilbert in many roles, from seasonal parks and caretaker to water meter supervisor. And it is with immense gratitude and appreciation that we recognize and commend Angie for extensive and valuable service to the community. During Angie's tenure with the town, she has served as a mentor and inspiration to countless staff, setting an example for employees townwide and consistently spreading positivity to those in her sphere of influence. Being the ultimate professional, Angie's dedication to the betterment of our community has contributed to the development of industry-leading operations and maintenance programs in Gilbert and the water industry. Angie was instrumental in the development of our long-range infrastructure programs related to water meter maintenance and water meter testing. She also pioneered the vision of automated water meter reading and through her leadership and guidance, successfully piloted several AMI projects and put the town in a position to begin conversion to automated meter reading. Thank you so much for your service. Congratulations."
Mayor, if I could say a quick word before you give that to her. Angie, we heard from HR recently. We checked with ARS. They can't find your file, so I guess you're going to have to stay.
She has to stay.
We'll see you at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow. Don't be late. I know you took-
Should I take this back?
Yeah, you should take that back, Mayor. Angie, you have made a huge impact on the organization and your coworkers and our community. We will miss you, Angie, but we thank you for everything you've done for us through the years and wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
It has been an absolute pleasure and blessing to work for an organization, the Town of Gilbert, and for the residents of this community. And I really do feel so blessed and thank you for the opportunity.
Again, thank you and congratulations. Next up, we'll have a special presentation. As you all know, many of our small businesses are struggling during this time with the COVID pandemic. And there was money that was freed up from the federal government. It's been passed on down to the Town of Gilbert, and we're able to help some of these businesses. And you're going to see over time, many small businesses receive funds that will help them through this difficult period and hopefully not get to, we won't get to a point in Gilbert that's happened in New York where they've lost 30% of their small businesses because they weren't able to help them. And they're not coming back, and we hope that we can help them. So I'm going to invite the Bergersons, Linda and Ryan, and also Chef W. That's all I got. Come right on up. Brian and Linda are owners at Bergy's Coffee Shop downtown. I'm sure you're all aware of it. Everybody knows about Bergy's and their success story. Chef W.'s with Not Your Typical Deli, which it's not. I've been there, and it's good. It's very good. And these are typical of our small businesses in Gilbert that we're hoping to be able to help through this difficult time. And we wanted to present them with some checks that are symbolic of the funds we're able to free up and provide to them so that their business can thrive. Maybe before we present those, if you'd like to say anything, you want to say anything, Brian?
Well, we're just very grateful that the Town of Gilbert has made a commitment to small business, and we just want to say thank you for the help that you guys have done.
Pretty much the same for me. I really appreciate the Town of Gilbert. It's amazing to have a business in this community and see the town leadership stand up and really care about what's going on in the streets. And it's amazing what this money does do for us, and we really appreciate it. And, you know, we're just very blessed to be here, and thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we're going to take a picture with this, a photo. No. Thank you so much. We'll move on to our communications from citizens.
We have one person that has requested to speak tonight. The Gilbert Town Council values our citizen comments and input. This portion of the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town matters of interest or concern. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the Town Council cannot respond to issues that have been properly noticed, that have not been properly noticed. But we are here to listen, and we will only respond by thanking you for your comments. I'll call your name. Please come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. Taylor Earl?
Good evening. My name is Taylor Earl. Place of residence is Phoenix, Arizona. Mayor and council, I am here tonight on behalf of my family and my law firm, Earl &amp; Curly. Normally, I would be in front of council tonight presenting a zoning case, but tonight I'm here to say thank you. As you may know, in September of this year, my father, Stephen Earl, unexpectedly passed away. My father had been what I would call a mainstay in the zoning world for over 30 years. During that time, he represented numerous zoning cases in the Town of Gilbert. As a family, at his passing, we were heartbroken but grateful, grateful for so many years together. Personally, I am grateful for so many years of practicing law together, ultimately becoming law partners. It was one of the great honors of my life. My father was proud of the work that he did in Town of Gilbert. He worked on wonderful projects and valuable collaborations in the town. His work to help build the community meant so much to him throughout his life. In fact, my father ultimately moved to Gilbert with my mother where he planned to retire. I recognize, and I'm here tonight because I recognize that none of the work that he did in Gilbert could have happened without the work of many individuals. So tonight, I'm here to say thank you. First, thank you to the members of the Town Council, both past and present, for your engagement and leadership on those many zoning cases he worked on, and for your respect and friendship to him over the years. Thank you to the members of the Planning Commission, both past and present, for detailed analysis, thoughtful questions and comments, and for pushing his projects to be better. And thank you to the many wonderful town employees, planners, directors, town managers, attorneys, and everyone else over the years who collaborated with him to turn good projects into great projects. There were many hours in meetings and emails and phone calls to do that. To these many individuals, let me say thank you for helping to make my father's career more than just a job. To him, one of his great life's purposes was to bring good development to the Valley, including Gilbert, and to do so with integrity, professionalism, and if you knew him well, a little humor. So thank you on behalf of my family, my firm, and myself. I want you to know that your contributions to Gilbert do matter, and they're deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. I have to admit, Steve was one of the zoning attorneys out of the many that I met with over the years that I actually look forward to meeting with because of the stories he told and just being around him was just a great occasion. He was very professional in what he did. He'll be sorely missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. We'll move to the consent calendar. We're going to be pulling item six for discussion regarding expenditures for two-way radios and item number eight regarding the contract amendment related to the recycling contract. May I have a motion for, to approve consent agenda items two through five, seven, and nine through 13?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. That passes unanimously. We'll move to item number six and discussion. Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you. I ask that this be removed from the consent agenda. It's two-way radios for our ambulance service. I wasn't on the council when we voted to purchase the ambulances, but I did oppose it at the time. I continue to oppose it. I see the new ambulance services that we're taking in under the town's umbrella as an expansion of government and encroachment of the private sector. I see it as a step towards socialized medicine, socialized ambulance service, for maybe a better term. I can't support the socialization of our ambulance service or the socialization of anything else for that matter. So I ask that it be removed because I want to vote no.
Any other discussion on that item? May I have a motion for item number six, to approve item number six? So moved.
Second.
Please vote. That passes for three. We'll move to item number eight. Councilmember Hendricks?
Item eight is a cost related to our recycling services. And I've got a question. I'm hoping somebody here can answer. I see the underlying contract, I don't have the packet in front of me, but I think the underlying contract was somewhere in the upper $100,000 range, and with all the amendments now, we're approaching $1 million. And I'm just curious, what we do as part of our procurement process when we continue these amendments, do we just award whatever price they ask for to the existing vendor, or is there a process where we are assuring that this process is competitive? I know there's not a lot of vendors out there, but are we doing anything to assure that this price on all of these change orders that has increased the contract by 400 to 500% are competitive with what else is available in the market?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Councilmember Hendricks. The original contract from last year was for $800,000, and the increase to this year is about, to $900,000. So it's about $100,000 increase year over year. We do compare that to, one, to our other contract that we have, which is with waste management, and those are very similar prices. And then we do also collaborate with the other communities in the Valley in terms of looking at what their pricing is to make sure that it's staying competitive as well. But those, at this point, those are our only two recycling options. We potentially in the future may have an opportunity to work with Republic Services again if they choose to get back into the market after, and rebuild their facility after it burned down. But as of now, the pricing is very consistent with, between the two contracts that we have, and then also actually a little bit better pricing than what some of our neighbors are seeing at this point.
So when we compare them to neighboring cities, what are we comparing? Are we comparing by, is it compared by tonnage, by product, by stop? How do you compare that?
We compare the processing fee, which is the amount that they charge per ton to sort all of the recycled materials, as well as the cost sharing that we receive with the vendor. The tonnages and the resale price of the material depend on the market, but those two are the parts of the contract that we can compare.
Thank you.
Jessica, could you explain the overall issue in recycling and what we're wrestling with right now?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The challenge we have with the market right now is that the resale of the materials, there's not a lot of resale value because China no longer accepts our materials. And so the market over the past two to three years has gone from very favorable to very, to less favorable, we'll say. But we're working internally to do what we can to reduce our costs and clean up our recycle stream so that we can maximize that value. But the main challenge is just that the market isn't there for a lot of the recyclable materials anymore.
Maybe a pilot project we're doing?
We are, in several neighborhoods, looking at ways to keep the materials that still have a good market value and potentially eliminate materials that cost us a lot more to recycle, such as glass, and obviously just getting the trash out of the recycle stream as well.
So that overall project could affect numbers like the one we're seeing tonight at some point in time?
It could. When we get, when we get our quarterly audits done, the distribution of materials affects what our charges are or what we make on the resale. And there are certain materials, certain types of plastics, that are just no longer being marketed at all. And so our vendors are treating it as trash. And so those are one of the other things we're trying to educate and try to remove from the stream because we know that it's not being recycled anymore.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So, you know, the whole model of the blue can helps to reduce the cost of the black can. I think that's been really solid for many years. Now that the market for the, or some of the blue can is kind of falling out from under us, I mean, there is no market for some of that. But it sounds like there's still a pretty solid market for some of the items that we've been putting in the blue can. Is part of the pilot program, understanding the economics, that we're still going to benefit the residents by, if we can scope down to just what is true recycling market, it'll still reduce the cost of the black can? Is that part of our pilot program that we're looking at, or is that something that we can, we can, we can see?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Taylor, it is to help us reduce the cost. I don't have the exact numbers right now in terms of if we were to be completely successful with the pilot and remove all of the less marketable materials. But what we did have is looking at when the cost is more or less than taking it to a landfill. And so if we're able to recycle it and it costs less than taking it to a landfill, we want to continue to recycle it. If it costs more than taking it to the landfill, those are the materials we're trying to remove to at least balance it out. So it's not costing us more to recycle than it is to just landfill the materials.
Okay. Well, I'm sure I won't be on council when you guys make the decision, but it seems like there's three options we need to have some fiscal data on. One, you know, carry on. This is what was presented in the retreat. We need a $2 increase or somewhere there to just keep it going, even though we know the market fell out on some of that. That's option one. Option two, like other cities and towns, just drop the blue can, but we'd still have to landfill the volume, and that's the two pickups of the black can thing. But number three is split the baby, right, is there's still a way, and I'm glad you're testing this. I was happy to see, Mayor, that the education piece of that seems to be working, you know, when we're educating the residents that they are, you know, moving that, moving the non-market to the black can. I was happy to see that that occurred. So maybe just as you move forward, maybe there's a fourth or fifth option there, but I think that would be helpful in your next retreat to have that data so you can look at it from a fiscal standpoint as well as a social responsibility standpoint, which I think we all want to participate in. But thanks for doing that. Thanks for the time, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. That is exactly what our goal is, is at the retreat that'll happen in January, February time period, have more detailed results of that pilot study and the financial impacts of being able to then roll it out townwide if that's something we wanted to make a change to the entire program and what those impacts are.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Great. Could we get a motion on item number eight, to approve item number eight? So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Sorry.
That passes, and that concludes our consent agenda. Mayor Anderson?
Thank you. We'll move on to a public hearing. Do any members of the council have any items they'd like to pull out on the public hearings? If not, then I'll open the public hearing on items 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21, and close the public hearing and entertain discussion or motion.
Motion to approve those items?
So is this an opportunity to talk about one of the items? I just wanted to mention something.
You need to pull it out.
Okay, let's, let's-
So we can discuss it.
Let's pull out number 20.
Okay, we'll pull out number 20. There'll be all those items except number 20.
It's almost like having two consent agendas.
Motion to approve all the public hearing items with the exception of item 20.
Thank you.
Second.
There's this motion and a second. Please vote. We'll go to item 20. I'll open the public hearing on item 20, which is a general plan amendment and zoning case, Z 2008. Did you have a particular issue you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I just wanted to get on the record, Mayor. So I was contacted by Ben Cooper, which is the applicant's representative here, and this is a parcel where the general plan and zoning is proposed to be changed from a business park or commercial use to a residential multifamily use. And there were some community concerns, and I just wanted to get on the record. I happened to talk to Ben Cooper about it, and then I circled up with Michelle Brinkman, who's the HOA president of Eagle Glen HOA, which borders this property. And there are several concerns that they have, and it's just something I wanted to get on the record because it's nothing that can actually be addressed for the GP and Z. It's something that would actually be addressed in the design review portion later. But I just wanted to make sure that for the record, some of the concerns that the HOA had with respect to the placement of any proposed buildings that do end up being proposed, that to make sure that balconies aren't looking over into communities, to make sure that the trees that are planted are, you know, large enough size to provide the shielding of the view shed, and that, you know, they're placed in a manner that doesn't impact the community in a negative way, leaves falling in pools, et cetera. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record, and that I also talked to staff, and staff has agreed to address these in the pre-application meeting that will be coming up. So that's what I wanted to share this evening and make sure that that was on the record tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to invite Ben Cooper to come up, and I know he can address some of those issues.
Ben Cooper with Norris Design. I am a Gilbert resident and I do represent Family Development Group on this project. And we have, thank you, councilmember September, for bringing this up tonight. We want to assure the council that we have been cognizant of these concerns from the very beginning and in fact, as the site plan that we originally sent out to the neighbors and that we showed in the neighborhood meeting depicts some of the things that we plan to do to mitigate their concerns and do the best that we can. And we look forward, we've already submitted a pre-application and we have that meeting next Monday, we'll, for DR. We will also be submitting the DR case in January and it will reflect this neighbor input and we'll work with the staff and the neighbors as we go through that public design review process. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Any questions, Ben?
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
There's no other discussion? I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, move to approve item 20 as published in the documents before us.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please vote. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to administrative items. Item 22, council administration, consider the reconsideration of the Town Council's action in the October 28 special meeting approving resolution 4165, adopting a new logo and brand. I think what we want to do at this point is give the committee ample time to review the new proposal. And I think we talked about bringing this back on the 15th of December, so tonight we'd just be postponing until the 15th.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
Mayor, move to continue item 22 to our next council meeting, December 15th.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Boards, commissions, and committees, any reports from any of the council liaisons? There are no policy items, no future meeting agenda items. Communications report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Couple things to note tonight from employees. First, a shout out to our accounting team and our accounting manager, Tanya Wright. We just secured the town's 29th consecutive certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for our 2019 comprehensive annual financial report. The CAFER is a critical document that takes hundreds of hours to compile and reconcile each year. It's often a document that is overlooked but is very critical from a standpoint of financial transparency, fraud prevention, and ensure that each transaction is verified, audited, reconciled, and accounted for. So congrats to Tanya and her team for that work. Next, our, Gilbert was recognized as the winner in the 2020 Digital Cities Survey by the Center for Digital Government, ranking number nine in cities with populations between 250 and 500,000. It was a collaboration with our IT and digital government teams and Gilbert was featured for our strategic focus on data management, cybersecurity, customer experience, and civic engagement. So more great work by those two teams and departments. Next, Cindy Bethel, Planner 2 in Development Services, passed her American Institute of Certified Planners test. The AICP badge is a professional certification for planners and shows a commitment to the profession and a well-rounded knowledge in the field. So congrats to Sydney. And lastly, Judy Martinez in our clerks department was promoted to deputy town clerk. So congratulations to Judy. We look forward to working with her in her new role. That's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you. Any reports from the council on current events? From the mayor, I have just a couple of things. First is Mayor-elect Peterson and I had the opportunity to visit the campus of Williamsfield High School. Was it last week? Last week. And I have to say how impressed I am with the state of education, if it's all like what's going on at Williams High School, Williamsfield High School. The Higley School District's done a fantastic job. We got to tour the campus, the programs that are available to the kids, and their proficiency in the presentations they made to us were just stellar and most impressive. So I congratulate the Higley School District for a fine job there. The other is, we have a birthday just passed, councilmember September. I hope everybody wishes him a happy birthday and we apparently have some crumble cookies here too, the end of the council meeting for him. So, so happy birthday.
Thank you.
Anything else? Then we're adjourned.